All right, we'll go ahead and get started. We'll see if David and others pop on here in the next couple of minutes. So, thanks for being here this morning. A couple of things to do today. Wanted to see if there are updates. Elaine, has your group met again?
We have not, so I don't have an additional report today.
All right, I think Fran, did you all meet? Go ahead Elaine, I'm sorry.
I said we meet every two weeks, so I'll have a meeting, I'll have a report next week.
Great. Fran?
We met last Friday, extremely productive meeting. We started this process, I think I said last week of sort of envisioning the ideal Clemson's traffic transportation system and then what do we need to make it happen that way? We came up with a pretty healthy list of some thoughts. I think I sent you and Andy a copy of it. We'll continue that exercise this coming Friday. Brad, anything I forgot?
No, sir.
Yeah, I think I uploaded the things as you all have been sending, I've been copying on those emails and so the, any documents that that committee or any of the committees have worked on are in the folder in the in the Google Drive as well. For example, last week, the chat transcript, they, I've got, you know, there's a, there's a document in the, in the land use with the resources that David and the web links are there. So you can go look at those websites and all that kind of stuff. All right, so this week, two things to discuss. First, the project manager advertisement closed. We have, I think, is, believe, three applicants for the project manager. And what I would like to do is ask for a couple of volunteers that we could look at those, discuss those, come back to the committee next week with a recommendation to the committee, for the committee then to make a recommendation as a whole and have a discussion about those and committee to make a recommendation as a whole to, to counsel, to move forward with a contract for a project manager. Do I have volunteers or will we move quickly to the voluntold method of getting help?
A question. So is there going to be interviews for these candidates before this committee makes a recommendation or is it just going to be a review of qualifications?
Well, that's what, that's what I want the small group to make a determination with three, with the review of qualifications, see what we want to do moving forward. I do think that at the very least, as we review those qualifications, you know, we might say, all right, there's one or two or all three that we want to talk to and how do we want to go through that, through that process? So I didn't want to make that decision in a, in a bubble. So I would, you know, if we want to talk about that as a group, that's fine if we want to, if y'all are okay with, if a couple of people volunteer to look at those, can make a determination and you know, figure out what we want to, what we want to do.
I'll volunteer to be part of it.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I'll be happy to volunteer, but but I have a limited availability in my calendar during the business day and week.
Yeah, all right. Well, what, what what I'd like to do is when we, when we get through the meeting this morning, just hang on online for a minute or two and we'll, we'll make a plan. Be pretty easy to, you know, review the, review the materials that were submitted. You know, the next day or two, and then we can say, all right, here's, here's where we're, here's where we are and what we're thinking.
Okay.
I'll join that group also.
Okay.
How soon do you plan on doing the interviews? I know you want to review right away. How soon would you like to do the interviews?
Well, you know, again, I think I want, I want some other people to look at the applicant, you know, look at the people who have submitted their qualifications first and then we can determine, but I would say as, as soon as possible. And if we schedule like, like, okay, so let's say it's Christine and David and Fran and I. If we schedule an interview, we'll, we'll let the committee know and say, all right, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna go ahead. We want to talk to this person. We're schedule a time that we can talk to the person or the firm and we'll invite everybody into that meeting. Okay? Does that sound good?
Okay.
David, I just started laughing because since I sent you the email, you are on the screen as Bob Brookover. So that's might be the worst thing that's ever, most embarrassing thing that's ever happened to you.
Wow, I'm showing up on mine. Oh, I am. Look at that.
Y'all can rename your, rename your strings and we'll get it straight next time.
David's gonna rename his anyone but Bob Brookover. All right, second thing that we were gonna do today is go back and have the discussion about the catalyst areas and criteria that we will, you know, use to evaluate those catalyst areas as we make, begin to make decisions about how to move forward across the board there. So want to have that, have that discussion. It would probably, would it be helpful, y'all want me to pull up the map in the white paper of the catalyst areas again? All right, let me figure out what I'm doing here.
Why you do that, Bob? If you, if you see something that you particularly want the housing committee to tackle immediately, when we look at this or decide our strategies, let me know because we can, I won't, we'll put it on the agenda for our next, our meeting next week.
Gotcha. Think is the white paper in this top level here? There it is. Bear with me for a second while I get to that map. All right, so catalyst areas. And as we thought about this, and I think, you know, David has brought up some you know, good thoughts and information about, you know, the way that we think about how, not just the catalyst areas, but as a city, as we grow and develop, thinking through, you know, being, you know, utilizing and implementing healthy transit oriented, you know, urban design, urban development principles as we move forward. I'm not exactly sure how to begin this conversation outside of, you know, I know last week, a few people had thoughts on things like, all right, well, how complicated is this going to be? Who are the landowners? Who are the stakeholders? There's some of my thoughts are, you know, along the lines of what I just said, you know, you know, does this help us from, you know, to become a more transit oriented city? Does this, does this help us redesign areas in a way that as they redevelop that they become, you know, and have some, you know, nod to those principles of, of, of healthy urban design? How do they protect? How do, how would these developments and catalyst areas affect nearby property owners and neighborhoods? Might be a criteria. Trying to think of other things. What would, what would your criteria be? This is, you know, needs to be a little bit of a brainstorming session.
Well, again, I don't know whether there's new development areas, but I know there's, there's other, what I would call transit, potential transit nodes in the city that, you know, I've mentioned before, obviously. I, I think the intersection of 123 and Iskina Trail with the Lowes and Patrick Square is a, is, is one. I think the Ingalls is a queen on 93. Area is, is, is one, obviously. I mean, they're, they're already mature areas with some potential for growth, but and you know, I guess it's in, is a queen at trail is, what is it? The, the, where the gas station is and the development that's going on along there that I guess Eric's doing. You know, so that's, that's an important node. There's a couple of long campus, you know, that are in the catalyst areas that we're already talking about, but I would say also now the crossing at Cherry Road and, and 93 is, is another, another node. I guess we're going to be ending up with something, you know, significant development out there at the lake. And and so, you know, that's going to be, so, you know, I, my thought is to think about how these all fit into a much larger framework of, of concentrations of people and services and where people live and where services are acquired in the city. And then think about how those are all connected in a network, in a transit system. There may be others that I'm not, I'm not catching on. I mean, the Pendleton Road area isn't, is, is, is another potential one, I guess. Some of the development that's going on along there at Old Stone Church and and those neighborhoods along Pendleton Road. Trying to take the elementary school, of course.
Bob?
Yes.
Related to that, I was in a conversation yesterday with a community development specialist who had done work previously in Durham and Chapel Hill, North Carolina. And this was part of the conversation with regard to the comments that David has made about these transit nodes. So in their redevelopment, similar college towns, they wanted to make sure part of their priority was to include where possible, affordable housing at those areas where those transit nodes were. So people would be able to have access to, you know, work in those kinds of things. So that was part of it. I have posted in the neighborhood preservation, planning, working group, a number of papers from Durham and Chapel Hill in terms of their work to redevelop some, you know, communities close to the university with regard to community development and these transportation, transit nodes, the importance of those and having access available to residents.
I mean, if we identified what we think are all the potential ones and look at what is a 10 to 15 minute walk, then from each of those to the neighborhoods we want to serve and the populations we want to serve, then, you know, then I begin to strategize where you put sidewalks, where you develop zoning that, that accommodates those various uses we're trying to seek. You know, and, and, and how they all intersect with the, the, the new bike trail system. So you know, I think, I think that it really needs to be looked at comprehensively and then because it's, you know, there is going to be pockets of development outside of these nodes as well, right? And, and there's also areas of protection that we want to make sure that we nurture and, and reinforce. So, I mean, I, you know, communities and neighborhoods.
I think overall, and I think Ken and David have stated this, but I'm, I'm saying what type of transit or, you know, people movement accommodations need to happen within each, within each of these catalyst areas? What's the extent? You know, obviously Clemson Crossing is going to have a greater transit development and actions and catalyst area one, you know, since it's right next. So comparing just on that issue, you know, we're going to have to make more accommodations. It's going to be other actions are going to have to take place to accommodate having development go on in Clemson Crossing versus catalyst area number one, you know, their next camp. So that kind of comparison is what I think is critical. And I think David and Ken are have both stated that. I'm just stating in a different way that looking across all of them, what kind of transit accommodations need to be made for easy access and efficient access to campus now, since obviously we're looking at student development, for example. You know, that would be a clear difference or clear way of comparing the feasibility and the prioritizing of these catalyst areas for one. I think the, your point of the impact on adjoining or surrounding neighborhoods is, is an important one. I think the property, number of property owners in these catalyst areas, obviously, you know, you've got, what's, what's it called? Tiger Park? We got 300 owners. That's pretty challenging, you know, and then the commercial, the commercial properties within each of these versus residential. I think all of those are issues that are going to have to be addressed as we look at development. So comparing across all of those, on some of those issues, I think are important. I'm sure there are many more. It was just.
That's where, you know, I don't know, we've had this conversation. The I get a little, I get a little worried every time that we have this conversation that, you know, it's a, it, and, and there is some pick and choose, but you know, it's not like we don't have, as development strategies continue to say, there's not a silver bullet solution. So like ranking these in some order, you know, isn't necessarily, I don't think the right, I don't think that's the right approach to take because, you know, for example, these areas, we might look at them today and say, oh, well, that's too complicated. That's never going to happen. But, you know, we can point to a bunch of, a bunch of examples of things that have happened in town that people, you know, would say 10 years ago, 20 years ago, 25 years ago, that'll never happen in Clemson. So, you know, and I think we ended our conversation yesterday on, you know, what's the cost of not doing something and that these catalyst areas? We have what we have today and we know today, what, you know, that maybe there could be something better that happens there that, you know, again, protects neighborhoods, but is better than the current situation and gets us to the point, we put the things in place that will allow for transit oriented and healthy, you know, community development to occur. That not doing something is
Bob, look at it a different way then. Okay. Are we going to start the development process in every catalyst area at the same time? I doubt it. So where do we start? And what, what's, what's the reason for choosing catalyst area X as our starting point versus catalyst area Y? I mean, that's, that's all we're saying. We're not saying we're not going to do. But are we going to start everything simultaneously? I doubt it. But certainly we're
Yeah, not the development process, but the process of putting the right, the right zoning in place because, and I wish Tom was here this morning. Again, the, because of the target that Clemson has on its back and the fact that we don't have something in place at the moment to you know, control what happens that, you know, some of these places that are zone commercial right now without, without city council passing the, you know, another moratorium, the no multifamily housing, developers and investors are going to come in and lock up property. And, and really, you know, I don't think that we, you know, put them in a unfair situation by the rules as they currently exist today, status quo allow for many things that are not going to be transit oriented, healthy community development necessarily in the requirement. So I think we do need to get the, the general menu of, of requirements going across the board in all of these areas that are going to have the target on their back simultaneously and with some level of expediency.
Well, I think you're, you're raising a different question then.
Yeah.
I think, you know, we need to decide if we agree with all the catalyst areas. Okay, fine. Then if we do agree with all of them, then what zoning changes need to happen to maximize the development efforts in a manner that we want them to happen? What then what the question becomes, what zoning changes need to happen if we're buying into all nine of these catalyst areas, if we agree with all of them or the five, if you want to focus on the five? If we agree with all of them, the development of them is a separate issue, the zoning, I mean, separate, but obviously integrated, integrated. So I, if we're talking about zoning, okay, that's a different question. And if we're talking about where we're going to start the development process. Zoning is, we can answer that question much more quickly.
Yeah, I think, I, I think we just need to make sure we put the right boundaries and incentives around the development overall and not get into the weeds too much in terms of some of these and realize that in my opinion, growth at the seam sites, that's going to be a fundamentally different kind of development than, than what happens at Clemson Crossing, for example. And that, I, I never see that being assembled in big parcels, to be honest with you. I mean, I just think the barriers to that with the land holdings and ownership issues, I think those are going to be gap tooth kind of development and that, that whatever zoning we have is, is geared towards smaller scale projects that fit into the parcels that are more readily available for acquisition and, and, and not think about those as development sites that have large assemblies and that whatever zoning we do in those places is maybe different than what we do in someplace like a Clemson Crossing that has larger parcels and, and bigger areas or Paclet Mill or, you know, their green field kind of areas. So, um, so, you know, yeah, I, I think we have to work comprehensively. We have to pay greater attention to those high pressure points and the places where we want to incentivize development.
I have a question. Um, when we, and this is just a sequence question. I'm a little more new to the group, so I don't, I don't know the answer, but in hiring these consultants, these facilitators to kind of help us in this process, would they not at the end of the process, kind of help us with next steps? Like zoning and these sorts of things, or is this committee trying to do all of that on their own, on our own?
So two, two things. One, in the, in the uptown area that we talked about, you know, moving forward with last week with a charrette redevelopment process, absolutely, you know, at the end of, at the end of that process, I would see where they will help again with those kind of big, you know, ideas about what the policy needs to look like, what the incentives are, what the zoning is to, to, you know, get the type of development that you want there. The, so development strategies as they went through, you know, they talked about like, all right, here's an area, here's what you want to look like, but they did not get into the weeds of like, here's the zoning, you know, you know, here's a, a, a menu or a package of zoning requirements that you should put in place. So the answer is no, but if we do move forward with some specific areas where we hire someone, you know, to do a charrette, I would expect that in that process, we'll get a little bit further down the road with, with what some of those zoning requirements and other things would, would need to be. So Fran's got his hand up?
Yeah. So, yeah, I, I think the problem running into though, this comes a little back to Christine's question is we still have to decide what our committee is actually doing and how we're going to do it. And these are great conversations, but I don't, I get a sense we're not moving forward. And, and so, you know, I thought, and, and correct if I'm wrong, that today we're going to spend some time even looking holistically, deciding some sense of how we're going to decide if the catalyst area approach is what we're going to do. And if so, what would be the priorities? Now it's a little different though, when David says, or maybe Larry, maybe the approach is more to look at zoning as the question and not limited just to those six catalyst areas, but for the whole city. Are there other zoning, zoning areas like flexible zoning that we're going to use? So I'm really confused now about what, what are we going to do? And Christine's question about what is the consultant going to do? And I, because I thought the consultant person was more project manager as opposed to someone who's going to give us any kind of ruling direction and guidance, but I'm not sure of that. But I think we really need to leave this meeting knowing what, what are we doing? Our charge, Bob, was to decide how to implement and provide the actual action steps, I thought, to implement the Clemson next plan, whatever that process is. Now, does that mean we go focusing, I said, I'm, as I said, on priority areas? Is it on transportation nodes? And again, I know all those things related, but I think we have to get off the mark here and decide what are we actually going to start doing to move forward? And I don't know, we, we've agreed. Are we, are we going to use the catalyst area as the primary focus of our work? What's the next, what's, what's, what are we doing? And how are we going to do it?
So two things. One, the, the current, the current deal with the project manager, that is not the, that is not the, you know, consultants coming in to facilitate, facilitate, you know, charrettes and those kinds of things. This is the project manager that will help us organize, organize our work moving forward. So, so that's one thing. The second thing is yeah, I agree. That's where we, we need to be, you know, and I, I think, you know, again, the catalyst areas give us an idea from an outside look where people with expertise and expertise in the area think that we have the best shots to create some, you know, incentives or to, you know, drive development to those areas where they would make sense based on what they heard throughout the process. Okay, that, you know, there's concerns about high density housing. There's concerns about traffic. Where, where might you look to develop and redevelop that would put you in the best situation to have more transit oriented, transit oriented development that gets people to and from and around the places that they need to, need to be. A lot of that is going to be student centric in a place like Clemson. So I think what we, I think what we need to do, I like the idea of taking you can't, I, I think you got to take both approaches of a bit of, of water tower view of let's move forward with what are the big things that we need to put in place to get, Larry said maximize, you know, maximum development. I wanted the big water tower things to get the right kind of development happening in Clemson. And then I think with catalyst areas, we take a little bit finer level detail to look at what David's talking about, where we say, all right, catalyst area one, that might be, you know, that's going to be different from catalyst area five. Here's what we need to think. Here's some more specifics about what we want to get into this, the, the, the zoning and requirements for that specific area. And the catalyst areas, and there may be others that we, that we come up with along the way, give us a place to, you know, places to look that we've had outside, people come in and say, yeah, if developers coming in, these are areas that are potentially going to be attractive to them with the right menu of, of incentives in place to, to drive the development there.
And so that's great, Bob, but, and I agree, but I think we need to decide how are we going to do that? And so that, that's great, Bob, but, and I agree, but I think we need to decide how are we going to do that? The Clemson is moving on with us or without us, right? Tomorrow night, there's a public hearing about the, the housing density issue. Um, people ready to move forward. So I guess I still don't understand even less so after today's conversation, what is our action step? What are we actually doing? To do, because you, I agree with what you said a hundred percent, because that's what I thought were your, your descriptions, what mine is also. So what, how are we going to do that? What, what do we, how are we stepping out and actually going to now move forward? So at some point we can give council a follow report and your, your, your common action was a good one, Bob, with this, this whole moratorium in the Clemson next report really was a result of the need for responses about high density housing. And I think traffic were the two main issues, and I think we stayed focused on that, but I guess I'm still concerned that I don't understand what action we're actually going to take to move things in the direction you just said.
Anyone else want to take a crack at that? Because I've been talking a lot.
Brad's hand is up also, so I'll stop with that. Yeah.
Go ahead, Brad.
Yeah, just kind of, kind of uh piggyback on what uh Fran said. I, I've got a couple of concerns too. I mean, we're going into April and I feel like we really haven't accomplished much. I know we've done a lot of pushing and whatnot, but yeah, I need some clarification because it sounds to me like we're going to hire a project manager and then a consultant on top of that. The strategic planner or the white paper, doesn't that align in many different areas with the comp plan? Seems to me like it does, and so I'm just trying to look after taxpayer money and also the, the timeline. How we can kind of streamline some of these, some of these charrettes or whatnot, or not even focus on all doing all of the charrettes with a consultant, just maybe hire one to do the uptown, which is like, I think probably the most important. Um, and then kind of, you know, get the ball rolling with, you know, city staff is ready, planning commission is ready to get to work. We're probably not going to have a meeting coming up next week, uh, next month because we're not, nothing on the agenda. So I just want some clarification on, on what we're doing with these consultants and the project manager when all the money was focused on the strategic plan last fall. And then now we're, I, I, I don't want to run the risk of a consulting firm to come in and kind of tell us exactly or almost exactly what's in the strategic plan, which aligns with the comp plan.
Yeah. So, so the consultant that we're talking, the consultant we're talking about hiring would be specifically for the uptown charrette and redevelopment plan. That did not get far enough down the road in the strategic plan, okay? And became a recommendation in the strategic plan and that being in, uh, in a very highly important um, area that needs some additional attention. The, the project manager is to again, help us move forward with, with this work. Um, in the interim between as we, as we think about not just the land use and development, but the overall recommendations that included, um, you know, staff capacity. Uh, you know, and recommends a, a deputy administrator for, for development and some other positions. Um, there as well. As you, as you know, I think people are, are figuring out, this is an extremely, extremely complex. It's a complex process and yeah, it's in the comp plan, but right now, as we have had our comp plan um, for a while and our current zoning regulations, that is not working in a way that the community as a whole has voiced that they are comfortable with. And still today, it, it allows for the same types of development that have been occurring in the same way. So I think that's where our focus needs to be. How do we get to the point where our comp plan, strategic plan and zoning regulations and policies line up to address, um, better development, what that, what that means and what we've heard from people. There are, there are some people that like it, but there's, you know, a lot of people that don't like the architectural styles of some of the development that we're, that we're seeing. There are definitely people that don't like how, um, higher density development has encroached on and affected uh neighborhoods that are nearby uh that development. Um, people don't like that there are, you know, that we have, you know, required um, retail and commercial space that sits empty. Um, people have addressed that they, they want, you know, trails, sidewalks, greenways. They want traffic to get better and we can address all those things and we've got to start thinking about how we get a better product for Clemson when development occurs and what type of product and what those rules of engagement are going to be, you know? Um, and we, you know, again, we're going to have to be water tower and we're going to have to get a little bit into the weeds in creating that menu of zoning regulations and other policies.
Yeah, okay. Thanks. Appreciate that, but some of those could have already been addressed from the comp plan if they just got before council and but, but I, I think council backburned some of that, like sidewalks and uh crosswalks. I think that came before them a couple of years ago from some of the petitions and it was backburned. Um, uh, speed tables were backburned as well. The chief then didn't want any elements in some of these neighborhoods where you have a lot of cut through traffic. So I mean, that's some of the areas where I'm thinking like, okay, that's, that's where a lot of the town hall meetings took, took place. That was a lot of the main, the main issue was, was our traffic. And I, what I'm saying is you can, you can have an immediate impact if we go ahead and implement some of these strategies and objectives in the comp plan, get them, get them before council and let them vote on it. Some of that can have an immediate impact. And a, a new chief, he agrees with me. I've, we have, I've, I've had a few talks with him lately and he's, he's in agreement now that he's read the the comp plan to its entirety. Talking about two weeks, but he's, he's on board. I mean, just just, just trying to streamline some of this stuff, you know, we're going into April. And, you know, like, like Fran said, Clemson's going to move on without us.
All right, Andy, Andy has his hand up as well. And then Elaine?
I was just going to suggest maybe just of all these catalyst areas, figuring out where in the city you want to see high density, if you wanted at all. And then focus the zoning to push it in those areas. And then ask staff to come up with strategies and zoning recommendations for you guys to consider to move in that way, just seeing how the, the big issue right now has to do with the high density. You might think it, it looks better at the pier or on highway ninety-three and then go more PD anywhere other than those areas with high density and then you can have it. So it's a little less restrictive in the areas you do want it. My, I know it's a much more complicated, comprehensive piece, but that seems to be the biggie and it might be a good starting point that everything else can fall around.
Elaine?
Okay, sorry. If you will, I don't know how many of you've looked at the, the, the comprehensive plan that's online right now, but there are executive summaries for each of the chapters and the person on the planning commission who was responsible for overseeing the, that discussion for that chapter created those and those include new um recommended strategies and for example, in the housing one, there's a recommendation on where to put high density student housing or high density housing. So there's some stuff in there. Um, I, I'd encourage you to take a, a little bit to time to look at that. The executive summaries are not very long. Like I did the one for housing and I, and the only information that's in there is what the, what we got is got as guidance to create the top, um, top concerns and then we created some strategies to go along with that. And, and one of them is about the Daniel Square area as a recommendation for some high student density housing and then I've forgotten the, the language, but it's essentially out toward the pier and everything. So take a look at those because I think we, the planning commission did more than just a typical five year review. We spent tens of hundreds of hour, I won't say hundreds, but more than a hundred hours in sessions. Um, it's at city hall going through these and Larry can tell you about land use and of the things that we recommended there. Brad can, what he just mentioned about things about traffic. So, um, I think that's worth taking a look at.
All right. All right. Thank you. David?
Oh, I just support the idea of a multi-pronged approach. I think doing, I, I mean, this committee, if it makes specific recommendations that can go forward that are, that are, that are broad and, and systematic, that look at the city, everything from transit to, uh, you know, I, and I also think we need to separate the idea of high density housing from student housing. Uh, so, um, uh, student housing is the issue. You know, a, a housing that will always and never be anything other than that, that is high density. Uh, and, um, because of the way it's designed and built. And I think we should have, I mean, I've been a, a strong advocate for creating a separate zoning classification for that use. That how, that housing type. Um, and I, now, and then, uh, I think then we can give flexibility when developers on parcels that allow it can want to have some kind of hybrid or mixed use kind of uh, arrangement, but uh, it maybe as a PD, I don't know, but, but I definitely think that we should put the brakes on student, high density student housing and designate where we want that to be in that, you know, this, this plan. These catalyst areas identify some of that. Uh, there may be some tweaks that deserve that. Again, but I do think that, and we can do some of the opportunistic things like traffic calming and and sidewalk stuff, but we should be looking at all that comprehensively. And again, I think it's, a lot of it is anchored around transit and how we do our transit planning and, uh, uh, and so, uh, so that has to be citywide and systematic. Um, and, um, and, and then, you know, there may be some zoning things that can be done, but I agree that simultaneously we need to dive deeper into a, a finer grain of look at some of these really critical sites, including architectural review. That's another one that I think needs comprehensive revamping, uh, because it just doesn't work right now. Um, and, um, you know, it's, it's basically a handcuffed process and, um, and I think we need to look at that. Uh, but in, and as I've said before, zoning is a blunt instrument, so we can't solve all the problems with zoning. Uh, it's just, you know, uh, that's been proven time and time again with the zoning that we have and what we end up with. So, um, so I think it's a multi-pronged approach. A comprehensive thing, this committee can be making recommendations for certain things that can move forward that are both systematic and, and targeted. And then I think we should be focusing on those, those high pressure areas in greater, greater detail.
All right. Fran had his hand up next, then Jackie. Fran, have you left the building or are you on mute still?
Yeah, in the, in the transportation sub-work group, we are actually holding up the ideal traffic transportation thoughts to the comp plan as a template. Now, the issue with the comp plan though is there are one hundred and ten strategies related to transportation and traffic. So we're going to actually identify the most crucial ones that will help us reach this ideal traffic transportation system. And I would suggest that the other subcommittees do the same thing, that the land use committee does that, that the housing committee does that, that the town and gown committee does that. In other words, look specifically as what we want to be. And then does the comp plan give us enough strategies to do that? And, and other, other strategies we need to do. And that's sort of what I, I thought the subgroups were going to do and come back to this committee with that. This committee, this steering committee, us, maybe our time is better spent looking at A, the catalyst areas and going through that process of, you know, will these help solve the problems? What do we need to do? And then B, as we get the individual reports from the subgroups, the working groups, take the big picture comprehensive perspective about how do we integrate all those and come up with a plan? But I think this, the working groups can sort of come up with what you said, Bob, like the water tower perspective, which is the ideal. Put them up against what the comp plan currently suggests the strategies, pick the ones that matter the most and add some. And that's what comes back to us. And in the meantime, we are looking, I think, at the catalyst areas and, and, and what, what do they do and what would happen if we, if we have this catalyst area as opposed to don't do these and the, and then try to make the bigger picture from the individual work group reports that we get. And, and, and some timeline to do that. I think that would help us. And I think Elaine's group, you know, and the transportation group, we're looking at the two big issues, right? The transportation, traffic and the housing in the comprehensive sense. And then I think we could, this committee can make sure that we're filling in the blanks, looking at the big picture, integrating the separate work groups reports, including this town gown one and the land use one. And we, this group would take responsibility for the catalyst areas. And do they make sense or do they not make sense? Just a thought.
Okay, yeah. So part of the issue there, it ju, and, and it's not an issue really is that, you know, in the beginning, we, we decided that this group was going to be the all hands on deck with land use and planning. I'm perfectly comfortable, I'm perfectly comfortable with going in a different direction. And having a, a subcommittee that specifically looks at land use and plant, you know, planning. Um, and, uh, you know, brings work back to this group, if that's the direction we want to go.
No, that's okay, but I, didn't we also have the people volunteer for the land use committee or work group? There are other people signed up for that, right?
Yeah, we do, and we do need to, to get back to them again. I, I've, I've kind of, I have sent a message to them saying, um, hang on, but I feel like we need to have our acts together. If we are going to be the, um, all hands on deck committee, we need to have our acts a little bit better together before we, you know, invite additional members into that group and we need to figure out, you know, all right, we're going to eight to eight thirty, we're going to do other stuff and then everybody else, you know, who's on that committee comes in. So they're not sitting through, you know, the other stuff. So
I agree.
I can think about that a little, little bit more. Jackie?
Okay, so, um, we've talked about a lot of things this morning. Um, somebody asked, what are we doing? What's, where are we at right now? And Fran pretty much answered and, 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 um, I agree with a lot of what he said about where we are. The subgroups are the ones that are coming to the committee with the recommendations. I also think that we do, as Elaine said, go back to the comp plan and, and we have a, I call it the sub comp, comp plan, the white paper, that really gives us a path forward to, uh, make, I'm, I'm pretty much a path forward. And so we're going to have a, a town hall meeting tomorrow and they're going to wonder what we've been doing between the last time they talked to us and when we put the moratorium in place and now. And my question would be, what, what would we tell them? What do we tell them? We've done great. I think we've done, we're in the right direction with the traffic subcommittee and the housing subcommittee, because they're getting to the nitty gritty and can answer a lot of the questions that may come up in the meeting tomorrow. And so for today, where are we and where are we going to? So when this person comes on board, excuse me, the, uh, project, uh, project manager, they are a project manager. What will they be managing? Will they have enough work from the traffic and the housing committee to manage? And so I'm asking, where are we moved? What is, where are we today? And where are we going? What's the next step forward? We've, we've been talking, talking, talking around the comprehensive plan and the white paper and all that. Where are we today? And where are we moving forward? So that somebody said taxpayers are not wasting their money. Amen to that. That when this project manager comes, comes on board, she has a clearer path forward. What is our clear path forward for this person? What is our clear path forward that we tell the, our constituents tomorrow in that town hall meeting?
So, so tomorrow, the, the town hall meeting is, is specifically, um, a public hearing about a potential ordinance that would ban multifamily housing throughout the city. Um, so it's a very specific town hall. It's not an open ended um, town hall meeting tomorrow. And that's, that's a way that, um, something in that, uh, realm of ordinance would be a way to begin to, um, you know, it really puts the brakes on, um, the, the big issue that people had with, um, with high density student, you know, focused housing. And then gives us, you know, if that would pass, then we can put our foot back on the, on the gas a little bit by opening back up and saying, all right, high, you know, density, student housing, whatever it might be, can happen in these areas through an overlay district or something along those lines. Um, so tomorrow, tomorrow isn't a open town hall meeting come talk about, you know, anything. It's specific to that proposed ordinance.
Yeah, I get that. And that's what I was saying, when we, when, uh, the, the housing group, that's something that, that's something that they're talking, they should be talking about if they're not. Or, and, and the comprehensive plan and the white paper all talked about that. That's, that's all I was saying.
All right. What, how about this? So that ordinance is on the, it, it's, it's on the table. It's up for consideration. What would, as, as a committee, what would our recommendation be to council, to planning commi, you know, to planning commission, to council? What would our recommendation be on that ordinance? That is, that really, it's a, it's a ban on any multifamily housing happening in the city of Clemson. Elaine had her, has her hand up.
I'll just tell you that when we discussed it at the planning commission, and I think the vote was six to one, but we wanted something clarified with it. We, we voted to recommend to council that they approve that for now. But we wanted to put some sort of timeline on it, so it doesn't look like the city of Clemson is just going to permanently ban anything like that. That was our concern. We know the intent not to, but, um, maybe have it be a hundred and twenty days or sixty days with the opportunity to can, to extend it a couple of times. That's why I like a hundred and twenty days and then another extension if we need it. But I don't, there was some question about whether that could be done if it wasn't an emergency ordinance like, because I thought we did that with the mask, the mask ordinance, they were able to extend. So there's a question about that, but that's how it came from the planning commission was we recommend this, but we recommend that there's some sort of timeline on it as well.
And this, this is really a moratorium. It's not a ban.
Exactly. It's just the language, the, the language in the ordinance has to say ban, but we want people to realize, the residents to realize it's not, or the developers, that we're not permanently banning them from the city.
So you can't say moratorium, you have to say ban, because that's
I don't know, that's a question. Can we add that in an ordinance?
It would be going, you know, the or, the moratorium has expired. So it would be creating a new moratorium, which is a different, which is a different thing. You know, and I think this gets a little bit at, at, at the point, some of David's points, you know, we, you know, we thought about it. There's, there's, you know, things in the, in the comprehensive plan. We know people, you know, have a desire to protect, um, existing neighborhoods. But, you know, you know, thinking through things like, all right, single-family, multi, multi-family, then student development, and then hybrid, hybrid-type development. How do we get that right? Is there a different way than what we've traditionally done to think through how we and where and the types of development that we allow to occur that then, um, you know, takes care of the, the, the systematic stuff. And then we can go in and create, you know, a set of policies and incentives that drives certain types of development to certain areas and doesn't allow certain types of development to happen in other areas. At the end of the day, the current, as the, as that current ordinance is written, that does not preclude anyone from coming forward with any type of project as a PD. There's still a path for developers to come forward with something, you know, through a PD process.
And, and we also have the, the, um, proposal coming from the planning commission to change that PD to also allow inclusion of a park in lieu of, uh, or some type of structure or space like that in lieu of, uh, um, the businesses, which, um, sometimes the, the PD with, with ends up being like a mixed use with the commercial requirement in it. And I think that's what we're trying to get away from. So we don't have so many empty spaces that we see in the, in the actual commercial mixed districts right now.
Right.
Uh, Jackie has her hand up, so I think.
Jackie, do you have your hand up again, or, or is that just still up from before?
I'm putting my hand down now.
Well, I mean, I didn't want to cut into her, her line in the queue, but I, again, I think it's not a one thing or another. I mean, our problem with making commercials is that it's just been not designed. Again, that's the problem with the zoning ordinance. It, it, it's a blunt instrument. It's not that it can't be, but if we, if they build commercial that is just typically not functional. But the idea of, let's say, mixed-use development is a PD, if it has a park amenity, that enhances the possibility of commercial being viable. Okay? I mean, because it's a draw for people. Okay? And, and so it, to me, it's not one or the other. I mean, it's, it's about the proper mix of things. And that's where a finer-grain review of, let's say, a PD, so that the commercial is viable, uh, that it's, uh, that, you know, it's designed in a way that's, that, that, that supports commercial activity, uh, as necessary, that, uh, and, and, and mixed uses. Mixed uses are inherently much stronger. The problem we've had with the ground floor commercial is the developers have clearly written it off and, and just done it as, because to satisfy the zoning ordinance and not done it in a way that has made it a viable commercial space. And, and so, you know, that's, um, you know, that's the problem. So it's, it, to me, it's not one or the other. It's about always encouraging a, 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 a workable mix of uses that make places, places vibrant, make them safe, you know, make them walkable, uh, you know, so. So I, I, you know, I think, I think we should think that way.
Elaine or, oh, sorry, Ken has his hand up.
Yes, um, related to this, a comment I made last week. And, uh, I think with our conversation about next steps, keeping in mind, and it has come up uh, during this conversation today, about next steps being included as part of planned development, a comprehensive approach as opposed to one-and-done type of activities. And I think the ordinance and those kinds of things, you know, uh, it needs to be, as we move forward, it needs to be thought of as part of a more comprehensive planned development approach as opposed to, uh, a one-and-done or ad hoc, case-by-case, uh, approach. With regard to some of the conversations we've had about, um, empty storefronts on the ground level, part of the conversation yesterday, um, with respect to, uh, these kinds of development in other college towns, namely Chapel Hill, North Carolina, and Durham, North Carolina. They talked about community-serving retail on those floors. I mean, part of the ordinance was that it had to include community-serving retail. So we have to define what we mean by that, but at the same time, that's keeping the community and being able to be attractive to, you know, perhaps all aspects of the community with regard to that. So, um, that would help hopefully keep the developers making that a very important component, that it is community-serving retail. We divined what that, what we mean by that, but I think that was an important aspect of their sort of development in those areas.
All right. Here's, here's where, here's where I think we need to get to to begin to move forward. And part of me, part of me wants to forget the, forget that the catalyst areas are there for a minute. Because I think people, you know, it's, it's, it's an easy thing to focus on the catalyst areas. To, to take a step back and as a committee, make a decision about what are the important things that we want to have come out of the end of this? What are our goals? At, at the end of a, end of a process that we have a better process for development in Clemson than what our current process and zoning regulations and all the, all the, you know, things that are related to that, that are, that are currently happening. What, what are the big things that we want to have? When whatever that menu is of policies, tools, zoning ordinances that we ultimately recommend, what are the big things that we want to have happen? And what are the big things we don't want to have happen?
Well, what if, what if we created a kind of master list of having everybody, well, not everybody, of having the committees or individuals in this group put forward action-oriented proposals that, and then identifies them as, as high priority. You know, you know, again, I don't want to say high, medium, low, because I think a lot of them are, there's very few low ones, but the, but high priority and readily achievable, or, you know, one of those two things, okay? In your proposal, we create a list and we just literally at, it, it, these meetings devote a portion of the agenda to, to discussing and then voting, if that's the proper way in which we go forward. To forward a recommendation to the appropriate body, whether it's, you know, it's time to recommend, uh, zoning rewrite, whether it's, uh, uh, it, it's, it's transportation to recommend, uh, you know, an, an action item, or whether it's simply as simp, as simple as, as, as traffic calming measures or sidewalk improvements or whatever. And we just, every, every meeting, we come out with a vote on, on certain action items that go forward to the appropriate body uh, for the next step, whether it's writing a, a regulation or whether it's voting on, 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 on something or, 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 or whatever. And that's maybe how we can get things going. Uh, and, uh, you know, and again, some of them may be small. Some of them may be implementing certain traffic calming things. Some of them may be implementing uh, a continuity of, of, of sidewalks in the, in the, in the community. Some of them may be big things like, uh, zoning ordinance change, um, or, or, or whatever. And some of them, and then we do that as part of our agenda while we still keep the focus on some of these finer-grain looks at some of these, these catalyst areas.
So, so Bob, let me just interrupt real quickly, though. So David, that's, that's already going on. Um, in, it sounds like the housing committee and certainly in the transportation committee. So I don't think we need to reinvent that. That group will, will, the, the, the transportation committee will come to our group with several strategies primarily from the comp plan and, and ask us to do that. So I think we would spend our time better doing what you just suggested for the land use part of the plan. Then I don't think we have to do what the housing group's already doing, what the transportation group's already doing. Uh, and I think for both those groups, it'd be better for our committee to get their final report than piecemeal as we, as we move along, because, because these things change, right? But I think maybe our time would be better spent if we do what you suggest with the land use piece, which was the all-hands-on-deck, if that's the, I like the approach, but I think our subgroups are already doing that. We don't need to, to get in there until they come back with what, what they suggest. We are the subgroup, Bob reminded me, for the land use, right? Or the working group rather. So maybe we do what you suggest in the land use context and let the other three subcommittee or working groups do their business and then come back to us. And there will be relationships across all those groups eventually, once we see those reports, I'm sure.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I, you know, and I, I just assumed that that, I, it wasn't saying that that wasn't already in the process. I was just saying that, you know, bring them for action items. I, I don't know whether the, the overall framework is intended for those groups to then bring them to this group to then, you know, coordinate with other aspects and then make a recommendation, whether the recommendations always have to come out of this super group or, or whether they can comes directly from these subcommittees to whatever body in the city uh, administration or, 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 or elected groups need to, uh, need to act on. So I, I was just saying, if, you know, there's a desire to not just talk about all this stuff, continually talk about all this stuff, but begin to actually act on some of it. That's what I'm sensing.
Yeah. Elaine.
Oh, I have a question as a, as a planning commissioner right now. Do you think we, as, as individual thoughts about changing, changing zoning or additional additions to the zoning need to be addressed as they come up? So I, I don't, I don't want to make a big, a big recommendation and change and the planning commissioner prove it. And then two months down the road, we decide that's not what we need.
Right. And that's where I think, I, I, I personally think that we, I would like to see this some things come as a big package to the planning commission, because we do one-off things, you know, one-off recommendations. Again, they may, they may change based on the recommendations and what this group and, and others are doing down the line. So I'd like, you know, again, outside of anything that's, you know, relatively basic, you know, that's, that's not going to have, you know, some things that are in the plan could have an effect on those. You know, I don't, you know, think that we should be saying, all right, well, let's change X about our zoning, because that X might be Y or Z in two months, as you said.
So I put on, um, I've been making an agenda for our, our housing committee that, that will meet on Monday. And one of the things I did is about the, the specific zoning for, um, student housing areas. So is that something, see, some of this I worry about, because it takes the, it takes a while for this process to go through. And I think if that's something we want to do, that may be one we want to propose and meet. If we come up with something we want to do and we can do it. And I want to, I'm, I'm hoping David might have some information for us about where we can find examples of that, that's been done. Or I'll be doing some research about that. So if we come up with areas and the, and the planning commission's already recommended a couple of specific areas for student housing. So if we come up with those and I bring them back to this group and, and we decide to propose that zoning change or to add a zoning classification for student housing, that's one I think we probably wouldn't wait, want to wait on. I can't see that changing a whole bunch. And it, to get a new zoning classification is going to take a, a bit of a process. And I think we, that's going to be important to have in place when we start to lift everything. And some of them can still be in the process. I don't think we're going to be able to wait until we make every single zoning change or amendment that we want to do, but the ones that are top priority, I think we want to get out of the way before we, before this, before we change back that, um, ban, if you will.
Yeah. So, uh, two, two things real quick, and I'm perfectly fine with you all taking that on. Your, your subcommittee actually is, I think the title that we gave it was workforce, non-student housing and neighborhood protection and preservation, uh, are planning. Um, so, but if y'all want to, if y'all want to take a look at that idea of what a, you know, purpose-built student housing zoning designation might look like, um, you know, again, that would be, that would be helpful. As we move forward.
Well, maybe it needs to be something that, that we can look at it, this committee can look at it, but, but you're right, that's not part of our charge. But land use would be, so we can hold something to the land use committee and then that, then it can be addressed there. But I still feel like if that's something we want to do, it's, it's probably one we shouldn't wait on a long time to do.
So how do we, do, do we want to move for, uh, do we want to move forward with that? Do we want Elaine's group to do that? Or do we want to look at us, uh, at that as an option? For this group? To keep those things separate, to keep the, the, the student housing under the land use and development.
No, I think, I, I think we should be looking at it comprehensively, but, uh, in, in this group. I mean, I think everything should come back to this group for coordination. But I, I mean, I think Elaine's right. It's an easy one. I mean, it's one that's needed. It's one that's high priority. It's one that's got a lot of pressure on it. And so I think, um, you know, again, I'm not, I'm trying to figure out what the protocol is here, whether things go straight from these subcommittees up to whatever body is going to need to act on them, or whether they're supposed to come through this committee and then go to whatever body needs to act on. But. But, but I, I, I do think that is a discreet one. It's easy to act on and, and operate on and is, is probably necessary and, and, and is not impacted, or it doesn't adversely affect anything else that we're trying to do.
You know, and the, the, the other approach, and this is the approach that the white paper, you know, takes is that, and the catalyst area approach is to look at each of the catalyst areas and create an overlay for each of those catalyst areas that gets at something, it could be the recommendation that are, that are there or something else as well, you know, instead of creating new. We can, uh, we can create an overlay for each of the catalyst areas that then gets it what we're, we're looking at there. Instead of creating student housing, work, you know, workforce housing, a high density zoning district, you know, that kind of thing. Overlays are, are also a way to take care of some of this stuff. And I think we can do that with both the systematic comprehensive look. And then the overlays become the specific instrument for those, for those areas. And there may, and we might say that there's other catalyst areas or areas that need an overlay for some reason or another, based on the plan. That, that in my mind is probably the path of least resistance.
On this Larry, I have no problem with what you just suggested, but going back to our conversation for the last several weeks, have, have we as a committee endorsed these catalyst areas, or if you want to use the word approved? Have these been, do we all agree that these are the areas that we want to promote for future development? Has that been done? And don't, or don't we need to do that?
So, so again, two things there. I don't, I, I know that we, we, I don't know that we've officially made, made a recommendation on, on any of them. I know that we did go through and we discussed all of them. Again, I think the catalyst areas give us a place that we should definitely be thinking about creating an overlay to not let the status quo be the status quo. All right. So whether it's, so whether it is what, what is recommended in the plan or something else, I think these are, these are areas that we need to address in some way. All right. That not necessarily go in and say, we're going to do or try, create an overlay. That's exactly what it says in the plan, but these are areas that could have a target on their back. And we want to create an overlay and this is what we think is best for those areas to achieve our goals of a, of, of better development, better, better development process of hopefully being able to catalyze some workforce housing, better transit oriented development, and so on and so forth.
Okay. I'm just, I just don't want us to get in to a situation, you know, as this material and our decisions start to go back to the public for their review, that they may be expecting this committee to give some endorsement to the white paper, you know, and, and what's presenting it. I don't know if they don't, that's fine. I, I just, my, my experience is that when you don't have some type of authorization or, uh, formal adoption, sometimes that creates some difficulties.
Well, well, let's start there at a very basic level. Let's start there at a very basic level. Are we in agreement as a committee that, that starting with these catalyst areas, that it is important that we do something that changes the current status of what is possible under our current zoning regulations and policies? Or are we okay with status quo in these areas? Fran, do you have a comment?
No, I was voting, I was voting yes to your suggestion. That was a yes.
Is anyone, is, is anyone, does anyone think that the status quo of what can currently happen in these catalyst areas is the best thing for Clemson? And based on what we've heard through the moratorium and throughout the development strategies process that we do, that we do nothing in these areas?
No, I, I think we act, we, we have to act on the catalyst areas. I would agree with your proposal, Bob. So, and I'm going to have to leave. I'm sorry. Um, I've got another meeting and someone at my door.
Okay. All right. Yeah. And I, I need to wrap this up in a, in another couple of minutes. Is anyone opposed to us moving forward and addressing these catalyst areas? Do we think there are, that these catalyst areas need no attention?
I would, I'm not opposing. I'm saying that I agree with your previous, previous comment about, as, you know, we have these, we have these three as a starting point, that there may be one or two others that need to be recognized or looked at. So I'm agreeing with the caveat.
And there's actually nine on there. Now, Paclet Milliken is pretty well developed from, you know, it's, it's a planned development. It's got a, it's got a plan. We need to think about it from a transportation, transit and traffic standpoint. But there, there's nine on there and there, and Jackie, to your point, there may be more. But is this a good starting point for us to, to address these and address these within the context of as we, whether we create new zoning or we create zoning overlays for these areas? Or we do a charrette and redevelopment process for Uptown? That this is the place that we're going to start? And move forward with, with some recommendations about how to address the issues of high density, traffic and everything else that, you know, the community voiced throughout the process, whether that be overlays, new zoning designations, and other policies. Anyone opposed to that? Larry unmuted.
Yeah, I, no, I'm not opposed. I just want to emphasize Jackie's point because I think that's a critical one. I agree with everything you just said, Bob, as long as we continue to communicate that other options are still possible.
Yeah. And other catalyst areas and thinking broader about a variety of things that could come out like, for example, broader thinking is going to be happening in Elaine's group with workforce, non-student housing and neighborhood preservation and planning. So that's where, you know, our traditional single family, African American neighborhoods are going to get some thought there. Transportation, transit, traffic, that's going to be injected into everything else. But this is our starting point and we may, we may have more. And so that as we, as we move forward and Todd, in his presentation a couple of weeks ago, gave us an example of some things that could happen in an overlay, whether we, you know, all agree with or end up on those. We, I think we can go through and start, you know, with these and saying, all right, what do we want for, for areas one and, you know, area one, that needs, that needs something? What do we want those things to be that we would put in place in an overlay or a new zoning designation? That would, um, allow for the type of development that we think is, is best and will occur there? And minimize impacts on the neighborhood and maximize benefit to the community. Does that sound, any objections to that?
I agree with what you just said. Just to clarify my point on the first three with the overlays. I, I, I was talking about that in conjunction with the meeting tomorrow, talking about the moratorium and all of that. So I think that the, the top, that the, it's a first step with the first three that, of the overlays that we're talking about because it, it kind of is in conjunction with the moratorium and all of that. You follow me?
Yeah. Or, or the new ordinance.
The new ordinance, yes.
Yeah. The ordinance that's under, under consideration. All right. Great. So with that, how about this as a starting point? Next week, what we can do is let's, let's start going through these and talk about, we can start with an overlay and maybe if that, you know, evolves into a different zoning category. But what an overlay might look like, um, we can start there and start going through these areas. Obviously number nine established Uptown, that's, that's one that we can, you know, temporarily, we're, we're adjusting that in a different way through the, through the charrette and redevelopment process. But is there any preference for which one of these areas we start with? Or do we take them in order, one, two, you know, we, we have no control over three, one, two, four, five, six, seven? Any, any preference for order? All right. Hearing none. If everybody's comfortable with that, that's what we will do next week. We can, um, I'm going to ask, uh, I'm going to ask Todd and Andy to do a little bit of work and we can see, you know, again, in each of these areas, we can revisit what Todd's thoughts were, and then we can say, all right, well, we're not comfortable with this. We're not comfortable with that. We think we need to think about this. You know, this menu of, of options or think about this differently, but here's the basic structure of what our recommendation is going to be for these catalyst areas to move from the status quo to something better. Makes sense? All right. Um, I know we're, I know we're late. Fran, is Christine still here on Zoom? I can only see a few people. Did Christine jump off? Okay. So Fran, if you can stay on for a minute, so we can talk about project manager moving forward, and then we can communicate with Christine and Dave as well. Any other questions or comments before we go? All right. Thank you all. Appreciate your time. And let me know if anything comes up and expect an email about, about the project manager at some point between now and next, next week. Okay? Some updated information. All right. Thank you all.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
Okay.
Bye bye all.